Okay, and also in your packets before I begin, there was a conversation at our last Silver Lake School Committee meeting regarding the amount of services that our schools provide to the community. And we often have been asked during uncertain times when there's a call to cut from local budgets and to provide relief to taxpayers, there's often a call to cut from school budgets. So as a reminder, we have provided the school committee with an information sheet that speaks to the necessity of public education in a democracy, our debt that we owe each generation to make sure that we have an educated electorate, a civic responsibility. And in addition to providing free and public education to all, I provided you with some information of the number of social services that our schools provide to our towns. And I'm asking you to help continue to support our students and our communities by supporting our schools. So some interesting facts, just from March 20th through May 1st, our staff has prepared over 4,239 meals for students who are food insecure, and that number continues to grow. In terms of counseling services, our high schoolers, there are about 20 to 30 students per day per counselor at the high school, receiving social, emotional, and psychological services. About 15 students per day at the middle school. And over 550 students K through 12 participate in non-academic counseling each year throughout our school system. In terms of our Chromebook loaner device program that we initiated during this pandemic, over 2,000 devices were loaned during the closure to keep students connected to school and learning. An excellent example of how technology helps to support and help us to thrive under uncertain conditions. We provide art shows, theater performances, and concerts. We provide recreation, athletic teams, clubs, community events. Schools serve as election sites, emergency shelters, and emergency dispensing sites. We work closely with our first responders, police, and fire. Our staff and students are active in community service and most recently participated in providing PPEs and loaner devices to both town and emergency personnel throughout this So the Silver Lake Regional School District has asked us to prepare a budget, actually prepare potential budget cuts for consideration. And the Silver Lake School and District Leadership has been asked to prepare these cuts in unprecedented budget uncertainties that have been caused by the COVID-19 crisis. The uncertainties include anticipated reductions, and our towns have been in touch with us with regards to their concerns about reductions in state aid, local revenues, Silver Lake aid, and delays in real estate tax collection. We are also aware of the following potential relief possibilities, such as the CARES Act, and we know that allocations based on Title I information and data will be provided to schools as well as to municipalities. Schools will need to apply for these allocations, and it will be similar to our Title I or Title II A budget process in order to apply for these allocations. We believe that Chapter 70, the governor is trying to maintain our Chapter 70 funding. And we're also aware of MEMA, the Massachusetts branch of FEMA, which is reimbursement that will allow us to be reimbursed for protection devices related to this temporary threat. So it could be used for things, we believe it could be used for expenses such as temporary shields if we needed to provide those in the schools, for example, when school started, possibly PPEs. But again, we're looking into that. So there's also been a lot of discussion surrounding the possibility of a 112 budget. So I have asked Christine Healy to speak to this issue. And if Christine is here, if she'd like to...
I am here.
Thank you, Christine.
Good evening, everyone. The whole concept of the 112 budget is used when we cannot get our towns to vote our budget prior to June 30th. It is a funding mechanism that will allow us to continue to operate until such time that a budget can be voted. DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, is the group that would be certifying our 112 budget. So I would need to submit information related to our FY '20 budget, anything on our FY '21 budget that would exceed the '20 budget, those items that are in particular costly. For instance, our Plymouth County Retirement Assessment went up $110,000. So that's one of those items they would look at. We would also have to look at any new Chapter 70 money and minimum contribution information that is available. Because we've been told that the information that came out in January is no longer on the table. That has been taken off the table and they're starting over. We believe that the 112 budget would be able to work for us because we do not have a, our costs are not evenly spread throughout the year. For instance, in July and August, we have very few teaching costs. So we would be, even though we had some increases in July because of those other items, our insurance, or because of the retirement plan, we would be able to get through till sometime in the fall. So this is just a mechanism to allow us to continue to move forward until everything is resolved, state numbers are finalized, and towns can take, have their votes. And that's it.
Thank you, Christine. And we will break for questions at the end, but we will move on at this point. We just wanted to give you some information on the 112 budget. So the school committee has asked us to prepare two tiers of cuts totaling $500,000 each for a total of $1 million in reductions. And it is our hope that none of these reductions are actually required. We took this process very seriously, and we met several times in a very short period of time to discuss and examine potential areas. And we used a variety of core values to help guide our process and to help make these decisions. We worked with our building principals, we worked with our special education director, our business director, assistant superintendent, and myself. And our focus was on supporting student needs, maintaining academic requirements, considering class sizes and structures that are necessary for effective instruction, continuing to provide a variety of opportunities for students. So we were looking at what students needed academically, socially, and emotionally. We needed to provide appropriate staffing levels to support educational programming in order to meet the needs of all learners. We wanted to make sure that our graduates would meet the minimum graduation requirements for mass core. We tried to maintain a variety of options for students while examining those areas that had lower enrollments. And we wanted to make sure that we engaged and connected with our students to provide them with opportunities to explore their interests and to make sure that they were less likely to drop out. These are the types of conversations that we have had over and over again and continue to reexamine our decisions. None of our proposals were easy to make. We're going to begin with our proposed district reductions, some actual and some proposed. So the new transportation contract resulted in a $100,000 reduction to our budget. In addition, Sacred Heart has closed their high school, and so we will no longer be paying approximately $2,500 in transportation. Because of the new bus bid, the cost of late buses has been reduced by $3,000. We are also proposing restructuring the method of how we pay Kingston for the reimbursement of school lunches, for the school lunch director, I'm sorry. Currently, Kingston pays 17% when actually it's about 30% of her time is with Kingston. So we're looking into restructuring that and taking that out of the Silver Lake budget and putting it into Kingston. And finally, we propose not to fill the nurse leader position. We agree that this is an important position, but given the magnitude of cuts, we felt it should be considered. We're proposing that you consider reducing the nurse leader position, which has not yet been filled, from .5 FTE, full-time equivalency, so a full-time nurse would be 1.0 FTE, to .5, half the amount of time is what we were asking for. And we're asking to reduce that to a stipend of approximately $15,000 instead to ensure leadership, some level of leadership for our nursing staff, especially during our heightened awareness and need for health and safety. Our next proposal involves estimated savings for FY '20. Savings this year could be used to offset the budget and avoid some cuts. We anticipate approximately $125,000 in savings due to an amendment to our bus contract given the closing of school, savings related to utilities, and savings realized with substitutes. These savings would normally flow to E and D. The next slide details potentially shared impact cuts to both the middle school and the high school. And our first proposal involves a $2,500 cut to several line items in both the middle school and high school. Currently, right now, professional development and curriculum development lines used to both pay staff and to provide professional development workshops is located in four, at least four separate line items at the middle school and high school. We're proposing that we consolidate these line items into two line items at the Silver Lake District level to be overseen by the Assistant Superintendent of Schools to cut that line by $2,500. This would allow us to closely monitor and align our professional development as well as curriculum development lines in light of the cuts. But also, we have talked before about the continuing decline in Title I funding, and at this time, I'm sorry, Title II A funding. At this time, that is the only source of Silver Lake District curriculum instruction and development funding for professional development and curriculum development. We're also proposing a cutting the late bus by one day. We would still have two days for students to take the late bus. This would help us to realize a $10,000 savings. We are looking to cut administrative capacity by .6 full-time equivalency by asking our coordinators, English, Math, and Science, to teach two classes instead of one. This will help to alleviate some class size issues and potentially maintain some elective classes as well. So the actual monetary amount there is zero, but it actually takes away their ability to serve as an administrator because they're going to be teaching instead of leading at that time. This slide presents the Tier One options for high school potential reductions. $4,500 music transportation. $49,350,000 for supplies, materials, including texts and contracted services. So some of the things that Michaela could speak to in terms of this line is cutting contracted services such as FlySense and EHP, which would force us to return to paper passes and would eliminate vape detection. Each department would be reducing their supply request lines. CTE texts would be cut. That's what that $49,000 represents. $3,000 would be cut from CTE professional development. That's a 50% cut to their professional development line. We would propose eliminating freshman sports at $27,908. Maintaining junior varsity and varsity options only. We would eliminate 2.5 paraprofessional positions for savings of approximately $35,000. We would not fill the current opening for the outdoor custodian, a $50,000 savings. And we would potentially reduce one full-time wellness teacher at the high school. That would be the Tier One cuts for the high school. The middle school would also be looking at potential reductions, $4,700 in transportation. This is the line that they use to help with traveling to music festivals, for example. It was also increased to, with the intent of expanding to athletic opportunities. So I wanted to note that here. That's also part of this transportation line, this original request. There's a $25,866 reduction to supplies, contracted services, and equipment. That includes things such as the auditorium AV improvements, worn band equipment, English language arts texts, which are paperbacks, different readings that have been proposed to align with the new frameworks, Project Lead the Way supplies, and the Health Online Database in the library, where that is funded through a library line item, I believe. But Jim can clarify that for us during the question period. The guidance speaker, Jim had spoken of possibly reaching out to the PTO to see if they could help. This is, for example, the anti-vaping speaker that we had last year, and anti-bullying speakers, those types of things. Guidance calls in different speakers each year at the middle school. This would affect that line item. Read 180 would be reduced for, by $10,850. And Jim has ideas as to what that will look like. $20,000 to reflect a .5 FTE music teacher at the middle school. $40,000 to reflect a 1.0 FTE special education teacher. $56,000, 1.0 FTE science teacher, this was a resignation. And this, this would reflect the consolidation of, or the elimination of some science electives. This does not mean that we would be cutting science from the middle school. And the 1.0 FTE special education teacher would be, it would mean an increase in the liaison caseloads. There is a proposal for a cut, .5 cut to the secretary, to a secretary position. This specifically would be in the guidance department. It would affect the guidance area in particular. And reducing the librarian to .5 FTE for a total of $196,366. Tier Two, potential high school reductions. $8,000, a .2 FTE Latin teacher. And at this point, I'd like to say, when we looked at cuts, we looked at enrollments, for example. And when we looked at world languages, we would, this cut would be at the Latin I level so that students who had already started Latin would be able to continue and finish. So this proposal would affect a, would affect Latin I in particular. One-time, 1.0 FTE tech ed teacher, a 1.0 FTE computer teacher, which are both electives at the high school, a 1.0 FTE special education teacher. This would affect caseloads for liaisons. A 1.0 FTE ELA teacher, which would have an impact that Principal Gill will speak to. 1.0 FTE adjustment counselor, which would mean the elimination of the Bridge Program. And again, Principal Gill will speak and can speak to the services that the Bridge Program provides. And then a .5 paraprofessional clerical position for a total of $215,000 as a Tier Two potential high school reduction. Tier Two potential middle school reductions. $8,000 to reduce world languages at the middle school. Once again, if we are going to go in the direction of eliminating Latin I at the high school, we would also reduce Latin at the middle school. Not as a matter of course, but if this is an area that we're going in, we could see how this would play out with students who we have not already made a commitment to in terms of world language in that particular area. We would cut the secretary position by an additional .5, thereby eliminating a secretarial position. We would cut an adjustment counselor by .5. We would cut a math teacher, 1.0 FTE. And Jim will speak to the impact of the math teacher. We would cut a librarian, .5 FTE. This would mean that the middle school would not have a librarian. And we can discuss the impact of that as well. And finally, a 1.0 FTE physical education teacher at the middle school for a total of $144,000. So our next steps, what we ask you to do, what we need to do is review the FY '21 budget in light of these unprecedented uncertainties. We would issue non-renewals for non-professional teacher staff and reduction in force notices for professional teacher staff if that becomes necessary based upon the decisions that the committee makes in terms of the budget. One of the things that we'd like to explain is why are we talking about this now? And the reality is, is we need to meet our contractual obligations. So our professional teaching staff needs to be notified by May 15th if there is going to be a reduction in force. So that's why we are presenting this now, even though there are so many budgetary uncertainties. And then finally, we await the budget reality, and our intent and our hope is to recall as many staff members as possible, starting with Tier Two as our priority. And again, we've provided you with some pictures of our students because at the heart of all of this, we're making some really important decisions that affect the students and their programming. And we'd like to continue our traditions of excellence and continue to serve their needs. And we thank you for the consideration you have given us. That concludes our presentation.
It's hard to follow up that presentation, Jill. If anybody listening to what you just said isn't sick to their stomach, they're not paying attention to what our, our goal and our mission is for Silver Lake Regional Schools. We voted a budget unanimously just two months ago for $26,750,000, and there was no extras in that budget. We debated it. We went to the towns and the finance committees and the select boards, and we really thought we presented a fair budget that the towns could handle and would meet the needs of our students in the three communities. Unfortunately, the reality is right now is there's so much uncertainty coming from the state with the Chapter 70 funding and with free cash for the towns. Halifax has taken most of their departments back to their FY '20 numbers. Kingston is looking at doing some substantial reductions at their town level as well. Plimpton, at this point, has just advised fiscal prudence in this, in this case. But I know Carl is here tonight. And Carl, if you could just give some flavor potentially to where Kingston's coming from with some of the numbers they're looking at, I would appreciate to give you a moment on the floor.
Good evening, all. Difficult for all of us, whether we're school people, school administrators, committees, financial people in the town, selectmen, et cetera. I went over some preliminary numbers yesterday morning with our town administrator, and we're looking at an adjustment reductions in our other functions of approximately $600,000. We believe that we're looking at a minimum of 7% to 10% reduction in state aid. We're looking at a minimum of 7% to 10% reduction in some of our local revenues that tend to be tied directly to what's going on today, such as automobile excise taxes, meals taxes, ambulance fees, et cetera. So that we feel that for FY '21, we absolutely are going to have to come in with a budget somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars less in total than what we had basically agreed to. I can tell you now that the Finance Committee, the Town Administration, and a couple of the Board of Selectmen were very happy with the, what I considered preliminary budgets that the school committees had voted, that had been reviewed for police, fire, et cetera. So that I think that we all were in the place where we felt that we could live with those numbers, probably would have represented about a 2% to 2.5% increase to the tax bills in Kingston, to the real estate tax bills. That's what we generally can, you know, live with, that people can understand. Of course, there's always a minority that thinks that the taxes are way too high altogether, no matter what you do. But it's my way of saying that I firmly believe that this is an extraordinary item that we're looking at. And I've been on many teleconferences with the Department of Revenue people, with the Ways and Means Committee people from the local legislature, and, you know, they've talked as much as 14% to 20% reduction in state aid. So that we're hoping and, you know, kind of challenging everybody to find ways to do things within about the 7% reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. And it's in having conversations with Carl and the members of our three communities, but also Representative Lenatra has been very responsive to our district since the beginning of this emergency. I've been working with her and her office to try and get some sense of what the state budget numbers are going to be. And the House of Representatives, for example, just met in their first session since the emergency just last week. They also voted themselves the authority not to release their budget numbers until the end of June. That's typically when we have the finalized budget for the state. I've also been in contact with Congressman Bill Keating. He's been asking, have we seen any of the federal stimulus funds on the ground level here? The sad reality is, in the CARES Act, there was only about $214 million in federal funds for schools. And as our superintendent noted, that's based on Title I funds. And there is an application process to go through for that, but we haven't realized any of those funds at this point. There was also a $3 billion Governor's Relief Fund, but that $3 billion is for all 50 states. And again, that's largely targeted at high-needs districts, and we don't usually qualify for that, that nomenclature. Today, the Democrats down in Washington DC put forth a $3 trillion Act called the HEROES Act. And contained in that bill, there's $1 trillion for locals, municipality, cities, and schools. $100 billion of that is directly educational funds. The problem is, there's so much pork added onto that, that it's become a partisan bickering match over the funds for our towns and for our cities and our schools, unfortunately. So we do have contractual obligations we need to meet. We are not voting a budget here tonight. We're just giving ourselves the flexibility, once we sit down, to do the actual budget within contractual means to make some hard decisions potentially. We all are hoping that we will not have to make any of these cuts. I was literally sick to my stomach listening to the superintendent go through even the first tier of cuts, never mind the second tier. But the reality is, if we present a budget to our towns and they can't afford it, we're going to find ourselves in an even worse predicament. And I pledged to you here tonight that we will hold off on voting a final number until we have as much information as possible until the last minute. And I hope to God that we can recall as And I hope to God that we can recall as many of you as possible to serve our students and our communities. I can't say enough for all the hard work that you've put in over the last two months, working with our students and giving them that sense of stability, for them to know that someone out there cares about them. And you have my deepest respect and thanks for that. I'm going to hand this over to Eric Crone now, the vice chair of the committee. He has a comment. Eric?
Thank you, Jason. Can you hear me okay? Yes, good. So I want to echo your your statement and thank the administration for all the work that they've done in going through this and making the list. I'm sure that was not easy to do. It's quite an extensive list. I'd also like to thank the teachers. I know the teachers are doing an amazing job with something that we've never thought we would ever have to deal with. But here we are. I just want to make a comment on three items that are proposed reductions. The first, as you know, is going to be the nurse leader. If we open up with students in the buildings at all in the fall, I would really prefer to have either a halftime or a full time nurse leader. I think with what's going on with this virus and so many unknowns, I think we really need to have a nurse leader more now than ever. But we had already discussed previous to this. So I would not be in favor in reducing that unless, for whatever reason, we were remote learning all next year. And I know every teacher on this call just cringed. But and hopefully that doesn't happen. So that that's the nurse leader. The other thing is the bridge program. The bridge program, as I understand it, I think regardless of how we open up next year, and if we're in a hybrid program or what, I think that bridge program might be more important next year than it has been in the past. So I would be against canceling that that out unless there's further information. The third item is Latin. My oldest son just graduated this month with a bachelor's and a master's in chemical engineering from Northeastern. And one of the things that that really turned him on to science, believe it or not, was Latin. And Latin has helped him all throughout high school and in college. And he looks back on that as really one of the turning points that that helped him so much through science. So I think I would be very hesitant to put any cuts in that area as well. Clearly, he doesn't speak Latin, but it helps it helps with science. So those are just the three items that I wanted to mention.
So Eric, I appreciate your comments and I understand exactly where your sentiments are coming from. But again, tonight, we're not voting on making these cuts our official budget at this point. This is a macabre menu of items that we can pull from when we finally sit down with more information from the state and from the federal government and our three communities. So I just want to caution us all not to get too into the weeds at this point. We will have time, I promise you all, when we're actually creating the final number to fight for the items that we believe in quite strongly. So thank you, Eric, for that. Gordon, you're up next.
Hi, Jason. If we're I'm concerned about using the 125 from E and D to to cover operational expenses. I understand the reasoning, but I just wanted to raise that as an issue. And if we're going to reduce freshman sports, should we reduce the allocation of the athletic director's time that would be used for that?
So again, I understand why you're hesitant to take 125,000 that we would be putting into E and D. For the past five or six years, we've been using our E and D fund to cover our capital expenses, which have been quite substantial. We've had capital expenses of around $500,000 to $750,000 per year that we haven't had to go ask the towns for warrant articles for. So I do understand why you're hesitant to go to E and D. But again, just like I said to Eric, I appreciate you bringing up the points. But again, this this is to give us options when we sit down to do the actual to the actual budget, when hopefully we have more information from the state. As the superintendent mentioned, the governor is trying to maintain our chapter 70 funds. I don't know how he's going to do that. But if he can, we might find ourselves in a much better position than we think we are in right now. And John, I am going to open the floor to you if you would like to make a statement on behalf of the Silver Lake Education Association. Go ahead, John.
Thank you very much. So this is John Lay, SLEA president. First of all, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work of our faculty at this difficult time. Two months ago, few teachers had used Google Meet and no one had any idea what the difference between synchronous and asynchronous learning was. Teachers have had to adapt to a teaching environment that's completely different from what we're used to. Not only is the faculty adapted to this new paradigm, but our members have worked tirelessly to reach each and every student and to create the most valuable learning experiences that we can in this environment. I've repeatedly heard from faculty members that this has become even more of a 24/7 job than it is in the normal school year. And they've done all of this while trying to keep their own family safe and healthy during this global pandemic. I'd also like to thank the school committee for all your dedication in this situation. The union appreciates all the extra time that you put in. And we know the uncertainty is as hard for you as it is for us. Thank you for your commitment to our students and to our community. I know that one of the most difficult jobs the school committee is to decide what needs to be cut when financial times are tough. No one wants to see programs cut that will negatively impact our students. I certainly hope that cuts of this magnitude are not necessary. And I would urge our towns to consider the impact that such drastic cuts would have and to look for any possible alternative. If such deep cuts, as what's being discussed, are necessary, it's of course inevitable that we will lose faculty and staff. The union recognized this, but at the same time, it's vital that cuts are proportional and balanced. This proposal does not meet that standard because it disproportionately cuts teachers. In $1 million of proposed cuts, there's not a single penny reduced in technology. Surely, there are some things in this area we could do without. With the current need for remote learning, obviously, technology has a role. But as we've seen in the early part of disclosure, watching an instructional video on a Chromebook is no substitute for the engagement that a teacher can bring to a lesson. Also, I know that our administrators are essential to the functioning of our buildings and curricula. But under proposal that cuts three paraprofessionals, one secretary, one custodian, and 12.4 FTE teacher positions, there's not a single cut to any administrative position. As vital as administrators are, it's our teachers that have the most direct impact on students' lives. And while administrators offer important guidance and direction, it's ultimately teachers that have established the culture that makes Silver Lake a great school that students want to come back to in the fall. If cuts need to be made, our membership knows it will affect faculty and staff positions. But this proposal is completely unbalanced. It's unfair to our staff and it's unfair to our students. My wish is that we don't need to make any cuts. But if cuts are necessary, the committee should request a new proposal which balances the cuts across all areas of the budget. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you speaking on behalf of the SLEA. Are there any other committee members who would like to speak to any of the proposals this evening? Are there any administrators who would like to speak to any of the proposed cuts mentioned in this evening's presentation? Okay.
Did Paula have her hand up? Paula Hatch?
Yeah, I did. I'm just, I'm going to hold off now because we don't want to start debating this, correct?
That that's your prerogative, Paula. I'll defer to you. If you have a strong feeling about something, please feel free. I just don't want us to get too far into the weeds tonight.
Yeah, I'm going to hold off.
Okay. So I can't see people's hands because there's 129 people on our call right now. So the best way to get my attention, when you're not actually speaking, is to send me a message in the chat. Just be aware, the chat is being recorded. It's part of the public record. And please have it just be to me, through me as the chair of the committee. So there's no discourse or dialogue amongst yourselves. So far, we've been adhering to that. And I appreciate the comments that have been added to the chat. Are there any committee members who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. What we need to do at this point is we need to entertain a motion to accept the two proposed tiers of cuts. Again, this is not something that we want to see enacted. We're hoping that this will be something that we can come back to the table and say, that was a terrible nightmare, because that's what this feels like right now. I'm hoping the federal government can come through with stimulus of the sort that we saw back in the 2008, 2009 financial disaster. I wish that our colleagues down in Washington DC would stop playing partisan football with such a crucial situation and come to the aid of the schools and our students. So I will entertain a motion to accept both tiers of cuts.
Motion is so moved.
So moved by Paula Hatch. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you for the second. Laura, you have a question. Go ahead.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around that we're approving something that we clearly don't, I don't want to say support, because certainly if this has to happen, you know, we have to do what we have to do, but we don't want to see this happen. And so I'm kind of confused as to what we're voting on.
Okay, so what we're voting on right now is
Because I certainly don't want to vote for this. And I know you don't either. So I guess I'm trying to just get some clarity.
We have contractual obligations to let teachers know that their jobs are potentially on the line by May 15th. I think it's also a moral imperative that we owe to our teachers to let them know that with the numbers we're getting from the towns, the numbers we're getting from the state, that their jobs are on the line. For us to try and actually vote the budget now, though, without having clarity on those numbers, I think would be dereliction of duty on our part. So we're kind of caught in a tough situation. We need to authorize our administration to tell these teachers that they might be losing their jobs. Tonight, we would be authorizing the administration to give notices of reduction in force. And hopefully, we'll get some good news from the state and the federal government. And we can come back and we can vote a budget that restores their position. And we can go back to them and ask them, please, please come back to us. That's where we are, Laura. But we have to give our administrators the authority to move forward with notifying the teachers at this point. Again, I don't want to call this a budget meeting because we're not voting the budget. We're going to wait as long as we possibly can. Does that answer your question?
It does. No, it does. You know, it just, I think, when you ask someone to make a motion, it just wasn't exactly clear to me what, you know, specifically, you know, I don't want to vote this as a budget, obviously, and nobody does. But if we need to do this and sort of figure out what the next steps are, then that makes sense.
That's that's what it's for. We're up against a deadline, both legally and morally.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Lesley Ann, you're up.
Yeah, I guess I too have a little bit of the same feeling that that Laura has in the sense that, you know, I'm a little concerned that there's a motion on the floor, but we're also being asked not really to debate the details in the proposal. So for instance, Eric's comments about the nurse leader, Gordon's comments about why do we need so much athletic department staff if we're not going to have freshman sports? The SLEA's comment about, you know, adding some, or not adding some, his guy knows, but including some administrative cuts in there, like what is that? Are those just off on the side for now? Because I don't feel comfortable voting this proposal at this point either.
No, there's nothing right now that is precluding you from getting into some details. What I was trying to avoid was us getting to the getting very, very deep into the weeds and picking apart a plan that our administrators spent the last two weeks carefully crafting. That doesn't mean that input from us isn't valid. And if you feel strongly about something, I am not precluding your freedom to express yourself. I just know that some of the points that we would make tonight could potentially be brought up when we debate the budget. If you feel there's a point you need to bring up tonight, Lesley Ann, please do so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jason. I just, you know, I know this, I had the same sick feeling in my stomach as you did in listening to Jill's presentation or Dr. Prue's presentation. And I almost feel like, you know, I need to digest it a little bit. And to be honest, you know, I think there are some areas that we all feel that maybe we should be putting some input in on. But I don't want to minimize the amount of work that the administration has put into this. I don't want to disregard SLEA's input and maybe, you know, some of the other unions' inputs as well and some of the other comments we're on here. So I almost think it's premature to be voting this package. And it's not to minimize the amount of work that the administration's put in. So I would respectfully request that we table this motion until tomorrow.
So as Lesley Ann just brought up, I did post for meetings for tonight and tomorrow night with the anticipation that the news we would get this evening would be hard to digest and it would be a lot of information. So I'm hearing hesitation from Laura and Lesley Ann to vote it tonight. I see some other people who want to talk to the matter. We can table the motion. But first, I'm going to let Gordon and Paula speak. Actually, Paula was just asking people to mute their microphone. I'm going to let Gordon speak and then I'll take I'll take that into consideration, Lesley Ann. I'll ask the committee if they'd like to table this for this evening. And if they vote yes, we can come back to it tomorrow night after thinking about it. If the committee does not vote to table it, we will carry on with the motion that's on the table to approve the two tiers of cuts.
And just one other quick procedural question on that.
Go ahead.
If we were to be, want to give direction to the administration to make changes, is that is that something we could? General changes, not to be, you know, prescriptive? Is that something we would do tonight as well?
Well, if the committee feels if the committee feels the desire to table the motion, I think I would open it up for some direction to the administration. I think that would be fair, Lesley Ann. Okay, Gordon, did you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable voting this tonight either without having a review of this and possibly asking for what other modifications could be made in place of some of the items. I agree with Eric about the bridge program. I think that's an awesome program that we have. And I think that that might cost us more money someplace else in the budget to support those students. So I, if you need a second to her motion, I would give you that when the time's necessary.
All right, thank you, Gordon. Chris, would you like to speak?
Sure, thank you. First off, I want to thank all 134 people that see on the call right now. It means a lot to me that people want to come out and participate and listen and get involved and get informed about this rather huge decision at the Silver Lake District. I don't want to second guess Jill and her staff. I highly respect what they're doing in terms of figuring out all these cuts from, you know, $3,000 here to $10,000 there, to which teachers will balance out. I think from my perspective, on looking at this tonight or tomorrow, I might like to see some options, like to support Eric with the 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 bridge program in particular. And say, okay, well, if it's not an adjustment counselor in the bridge program, what might it be next? And I don't want to micromanage the administration here because they may say, well, Chris, we've put a, you know, a high grade on the need to get rid of the adjustment bridge counselor versus, you know, the alternative, which really doesn't help us as much from an operation perspective. It may help us more from a budgetary perspective. That's just my thought on, on that, but I, I can't really criticize what I see in front of me. It, it looks like, and it is a ton of deep work. So thank you to Jill and Ryan, the rest of the staff there, and the principals as well.
Okay. Jill, I do have a question. It was asked if people who are potentially going to be receiving reduction in force notices, have they been spoken to at any point yet, or is that something that's going to happen after this, this vote?
No, they have been spoken to, both Jim and Michaela, and union representatives have met with the people who currently hold these positions. However, that could, I'm trying to figure out how to explain this. For some people, there may be bumping rights that now in theory would begin to take effect, and so it's, they've been notified, but there could be other changes as a result of bumping rights eventually.
Thank you very much. I, I had a feeling that was your answer for some of our conversations, but I just thought it was important for you to say that out loud since it was asked. Laura, you're up. Go ahead.
Oops, sorry, my mute button disappeared. So I just want to clarify. So if we're, if we're voting tonight, essentially what we're voting on is we're authorizing the administration to prepare a budget with these suggestions in mind, but we are not approving a new budget.
That is correct. Tonight, we are not approving a budget. You know, as Carl has said, with his best prognostications, talking to the Department of Revenue, talking to members of the Ways and Means Committee, with, with my conversations, with people on Beacon Hill, and through school committees across the state, there is no definitive answer right now on what the state budget is going to be. There's no definitive number on what the cuts to local aid will be, or cuts to Chapter 70 will be. But we do have some good information that allows us to prognosticate with today's information. This could change tomorrow, it could change next week. But again, we have that contractual obligation by Friday to, to let people know officially that reduction in force is going to be implemented in their position. And then we'll come back to the table. Hopefully, a few weeks from now. Kingston, by the way, does plan on having a town meeting. So does Plimpton at this point, before June 30. So we would have to give them numbers at some point. So that's something that Jill and I will work with the three towns to see when they would need that number by, and I would try and have our meeting as close to that date as possible, with still giving them the ability to, to handle it from the town side as well. That will give us the best information to work from. Right now, things are too fuzzy. Like Christine said, the governor's numbers that he put out have literally been thrown out. He, he himself says they're worthless to work off at this point. What he is trying to do is he's trying to hold together our funding for this year. Governor Baker has promised not to do 9C cuts for the remainder of this year, which, which we're very fortunate for. Making cuts mid-year is a difficult thing to do. The governor filed a supplemental budget today for $1 billion. It's entirely for funds to deal with the COVID-19 experience in Massachusetts. He's borrowing those funds in anticipation that he will get reimbursed from the federal government. So I want you to think about this for a moment. Our governor is having to take out a loan because he hasn't received the funding that he's been promised from the federal government to deal with a pandemic. So I don't have a lot of faith that we're going to get much clarity from the federal government on its relief and stimulus for us before June 30. This is uncharted territory. You know, the financial disaster was almost slow motion. People said when Lehman Brothers happened, it felt like it was overnight. It was months of a decline. This time, we hit a wall. The, the economy was, was chugging along. Of course, there were some problems here or there. But to have unemployment at 20% in the United States of America overnight is unprecedented. And the impact here in Massachusetts is being felt quite deeply. I applaud our governor for his leadership in shutting down non-essential businesses and supporting our superintendent and us in shutting down the schools to keep our students, our staff, and their families safe, but it has had economic repercussions. Yeah. I am leaning towards wanting to table and just think about this tonight, though I, I don't, I don't want to supersede the work that's been done by our administration. I still think that there could be valid input from committee members between now and tomorrow evening. What I would ask, though, is please try not to micromanage, try not to second guess. We do have valid ideas and concerns, I'm sure, that we can bring to the table, as some of you have already stated. But just remember, at the end of the day, hopefully, we will not need to make the majority of these cuts, and we will try and make this as unimpactful on our staff as possible. Mike has his hand up. Go ahead, Mike.
Hi, Jason. I don't feel comfortable tonight voting this. There's just, there's so much information that just got, got handed to us. And I, I definitely think it should be tabled so we can, we can review.
All right. Thank you, Mike. So I'm hearing from a majority of the committee that they appreciate Leslie Ann's idea to table. Leslie Ann, would you like to officially make a motion to table our vote until tomorrow evening?
So moved.
Okay, Gordon, you said you'd like- Oh, Chris? We got a second from Chris. Okay, so I need to do a roll call because of this remote participation. Mike, how do you vote? Thank you, Mike. Paula, how do you vote? You're on mute, Paula. Do you vote yes to table? Okay, I see a thumbs up from Paula. I think that officially counts. Chris?
Yeah.
Thank you. Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes.
And has Ed joined us? Just wanted to make sure. Eric?
Yes.
And Jason is also a yes. So we unanimously vote to table the information. And again, to our administrators, this is not, this is not a condemnation of the work that you did. I think it's actually an appreciation of how deep we need to think about the presentation you put forth for us this evening. We do appreciate the work, and we know it went beyond central office. We know it went into the principals' offices as well. So thank you to Jim and Michaela for their work as well. Is there anybody from the committee who'd like to speak before I call us adjourned for the evening?
Jason, this is Leslie Ann. Sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Go ahead, Leslie Ann.
So you said after we voted, if we voted to table that, then we would open up discourse on potential debate on issues if we're-
Yep. If you, if you have a point you would like to make now that you feel strongly about and you don't need to think on, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I just wanted to know the procedurally, is, is that what we're doing? And are we taking input from others on, who are on the line as well? On this, without, again, minimizing the amount of work that Jill and her team have gone and has gone into this?
Well, I've been looking at some of the comments that have been made by members of the audience this evening. Most of them are people who are in the front lines in this situation, our, our, our teachers and our staff of our schools. And their comments will be looked at and thought about. If you have any of the comments specifically you'd like to address, please.
I guess, I guess for us, I mean, you know, this is such a foreign way to transact business, but, yeah, so I don't want to minimize or, you know, not allow discourse, but, you know, I'm wondering if, if we do have generalized input for the, for the administration to consider for a second version of our proposal, that would be good to know, because I don't want to come back tomorrow night and look at the same proposal again unless we all feel confident that we just need a night to sleep on it. So, I mean, we would push ourselves date-wise into a bind, because if we came back tomorrow and thought, oh, what about this and what about that?
Tomorrow, tomorrow is a drop dead date, Leslie Ann.
Right.
We don't have an option to reconvene on Thursday. The reason I posted for two evenings last week is because of the requirements of our towns and the state law that we publicly post meetings. It would be impossible to post a meeting for Thursday night at this point.
Okay.
So we-
Can I ask a question then?
Yeah, we, we need to be pretty sure of what we're doing tomorrow night, so go ahead and ask your question now.
Okay. So Jill, I'm sorry, there's a lot of material presented very quickly. Is it possible for you to just explain a little bit of your process of who is involved in coming up with your list, for instance? Well, just, can you explain a little bit more about how you guys went through this process and who was involved?
Sure. We asked the principals for inputs, and we gave them guidance. They came to the table virtually, and we discussed the impact of certain decisions. So it was never about something being important or not important. It was how many, how, let's take a look at the number of sections. Let's, let's take a look at the number of students. Is that under prescribed? Could we, you know, eliminate a couple of sections here? Could we eliminate a couple of sections there and try to maintain opportunities for students? We placed a premium on required courses, obviously, but then we also had to look at structures. So it's one thing to say, oh, and I'm explaining, I said this, but just to give you some, just kind of an example, sometimes people might say to you, why didn't they just eliminate all the electives? And there's a number of reasons why we wouldn't, including, I'm sorry, I think someone isn't muted, including. Thank you. Including, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. So we, why not eliminate electives? So, for example, we have time and learning, we have a schedule. We can't just send students into study halls. We need to have opportunities for students. In addition, some students are in school because of those opportunities. We want to maintain their engagement. We want to allow them to explore different opportunities. This will help us lessen the likelihood of, of dropouts and things of that nature. So both Jim and Michaela are on the line, and both Jim and Michaela are available to speak to any particular items on the list in terms of, for example, I know there's been a lot of questions about the bridge program. Michaela could certainly speak to the bridge program. Jim could talk to the reasons for his cuts and how they relate to his schedule and his team, his team approach at the middle school, for example. But we did look at class sizes, so sometimes that was one of our considerations. I noticed on the line, why no cuts to the history, high school history? One of the reasons that we, that was discussed in the meeting was the high enrollment rate in a lot of our history electives. So they're very popular, they're, they're, they are, they are thriving in terms of an elective that kid they're taking at the high school. So it, it wasn't a, a favoritism. It became looking at the numbers of certain electives and which ones had a high enrollment, for example. I'm hoping that answered your question, Leslie Ann.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can I just do one follow-up, Jason, before you move on?
Yeah, you could follow up. Go ahead, Leslie.
Okay, thank you. So Jill, I know that, well, from what I understand from going through our budget process earlier this year, we, relative to other school districts and relative to specifically other regional school districts, we run a very lean administrative staff, probably on the lower side of, of what's really necessary to run this kind of complexity. And I know that, and so I want to give credence to, to that situation. With that said, I'm wondering if we could take a second look at some of the administrative aspects of the, of the proposed, of your proposal, and also was wondering if if the department chairs and coordinators were involved in, in the discussions as well.
The department chairs and coordinators were not involved with the meetings with central office staff and the principals. It was just Michaela and Jim with us discussing these items with Marie, Christine Healy, and Ryan Lynch. The, so in terms of the coordinators, one of the things that we as a district need to confront is the fact that the standards have been around since 1993, I believe. And we need a guaranteed viable articulated aligned curriculum pre-K through 12. And in addition, new standards have come out in several areas over the last few years for ELA and science, for example. Now more than ever, we have really seen as a community the importance of effective collaboration, effective communication, and effective teaching strategies. And our coordinators are, are critical to continuing our work with curricular alignment and making sure that all of our students have access, equitable access to high standards. And NIASK, for example, has cited this in their report to the high school. The high school does not have a common curriculum, a common written curriculum for all of their departments, and we have only started probably in the last two years since I've been here focusing on, on writing this curriculum. So any cuts to these areas will obviously have an impact. And yes, when you, when you look at the complexity of this district, the size of this district, the fact that there are not one town, so if we're comparing ourselves to a one-town administrative team, we don't have one town, we have three. We don't have one school committee, we have four. We don't have one teaching bargaining unit, we have three. So it's a, we, we don't have the simplicity that is afforded to other communities, because we are a complicated regional school district. And so if you're asking to to cut in other areas, I, I think you are, are also getting into territory where you're, you're looking at a limited number of people to evaluate, a limited number to of people who, who help with student interventions and discipline and things of that nature. So there's no lack of work to be done. And any of those cuts would certainly have an impact on those schools or in those departments.
Okay, thank you. I was more just asking about the process, so I, I appreciate your response. Thanks.
And I'm going to defer to Paula Hatch now. Paula?
Yeah, thanks, Jason. I, this is extremely difficult for everybody, and I think Jill has articulated for us the amount of time and thought and experience that has gone into preparing what was shared with us tonight. Nobody is going to like it. This is an awful situation. If we take something off of their, or agree to take something off of their plan as presented tonight, a different awful item will be replaced. It, it's, it's a perpetual discussion. I am going to sort of echo, I guess, Chris's thoughts, where I trust that the administration has looked at this deeply, has swallowed hard, and has made the difficult suggestions that they did tonight. And I, again, from a time perspective as well, and, and the environment we're in, I don't believe that I could come up with any other ideas. Again, swapping out an evil for another evil. It, it's a perpetual discussion here. Regarding the administration, I feel strongly that we are very slim at the top, the people leading our schools. We don't have a vast group of people doing that. I would be very hesitant to touch- I would be very hesitant to touch administration any further than we have now or in the past. That's me as one person, but I, I just got to get it out there. This is, this is a never-ending discussion on these ideas tonight. They're painful, but we're going to swap pain for pain.
Paula, thank you very much for your words. Um, you know that I always look to you in times like this, to say what needs to be said, and I couldn't have said it better myself. I echo your sentiments and your statements, thank you. Gordon, you're on next, please.
I would like to have the administration review the athletics program and see if there's any changes that we can make there besides the freshmen. I think that where we're cutting classroom teachers, we ought to look at what we have for athletic programs and see if there's tough choices that we have to make there versus providing in-classroom education.
Thank you, Gordon. Any other members of the committee like to speak before we adjourn for the evening? So, I can't say it better than Paula said. If we come back to the table tomorrow night, uh, in exchange, some of the, the cuts proposed for new ideas, uh, they're going to be just as difficult. Kim, I do see your questions, um, that you're asking about ELA. So I will, I will address that question there. I mean, I don't want to make this department against department. Um, I don't want to make this, um, program versus program. None of this is, is a comfortable situation to find ourselves in. You know, and teacher on teacher, it gets ugly in this situation. So, I have questions about the electives. What I'm hearing is that because students must take full, four full years of ELA, there are fewer offered electives and this is the reason that ELA will be cut. Like to hear Jill elaborate on the reasoning. ELA doesn't have the same opportunity to offer electives due to MCAS SAT graduation requirements because those requirements in ELA position will be cut. I don't want to speak for the superintendent. But I think, I think when, um, we start asking these questions in this situation, sometimes the way that it's interpreted, what we're saying, um, isn't necessarily what we meant by it. So, um, I don't think we're arbitrarily picking. Is adding the admin to the discussion about cuts? Hold on. Really trading evils. Why are teachers taking the brunt and admin not being considered at all? So admin compiled and processed the current cuts. So we can get as descriptive as we want here. We can end up all trying to, to cook up this budget together, but unfortunately, it's not how the process works. It has been brought up tonight by a member of the committee, and by the, the audience, why administration wasn't part of these cuts. We have tabled for this evening. We did not vote the package as presented. We can have our administration go back and, and look at that. But we've also heard that as a regional school committee, we have less administrators than most regional schools of comparable sizes. We can really start dividing ourselves here, uh, into a terrible fractured situation. And I know times like this are trying for all of us. But we need to try and trust this process. And we need to have hope that what we're proposing here tonight as potential cuts don't come to fruition. The second tier of cuts was very teacher-heavy. I, I saw that as well. It made me, it made me sick. That, that was, that's when I really, um, really felt it in my gut. I understand that. We have not voted yet on these proposals. We're going to take a night to think about it. So your comments have been read by all committee members, I guarantee you that. And, um, trying to manage 130 people a- and plus intellectually conceptualize what's being discussed here tonight and read all your comments, um, as you all know, isn't the easiest thing to do. I am listening to you, I am hearing you. But at the end of the day, um, I'm going to have to authorize and, and eight other people are going to have to authorize our administration to move forward tomorrow night. So we can meet our contractual obligations to our teachers and our staff. Again, with the hopes that we don't have to go there. Eric, you, you had your hand up, go ahead.
So my question is procedural. If we vote positive for this, uh, for these cuts, will we have the opportunity to go back when we build our budget to put these things back in specifically? Because there are several things as already outlined that I, I, I can't support. But voting yes for these cuts, we can turn around when we do our budget, let's say in June, first week of June, and put certain things back in?
Yes. The simple answer is yes.
Thank you.
Again, this is a macabre menu. We're in a terrible position that we have no data to work from. So we're giving ourselves the flexibility to be able to make these cuts with the hope that we will not have to make any of them. But realistically, we know that the financial situation of the country and the state and our towns is not where it was back on March 12th. So, no, you are not obligating yourself to vote for any of these items to be cut from the actual budget. It's just giving the authority to our administration to proceed with notification of these cuts to anybody who needs to know. That's it, as simple as that. And I'll reiterate that tomorrow before we take the vote, just so everyone's clear again. All right. So I will entertain a motion. Is there a site that we can go to to see Jill's slides again? Jill, is there a possibility, um, since you presented those slides today and they're part of the public record, is there a way for us, um, to get them to people? There seems to be some interest in seeing those proposals. You're still muted.
Sure, I'd like to talk to, to John Lay, um, to discuss whether it'd be appropriate to just send it out as a, um, a to all the school, well, to, to the middle school and high school as an attachment. And if, if he is not opposed, then, then we can do it that way. John can get in touch with me.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you right now that, that's fine. Um, I didn't know if any members of the public might be interested in seeing it as well, though. So I, I don't know if maybe, um, in addition to that, it could be uploaded in the, um, um, school committee section of the website perhaps as well. But you could certainly email the faculty, I think that's fine.
I would, I would defer to, uh, the chair as to whether or not he would like the presentation posted on the school website.
I have no objection unless someone from the committee has an objection to that. I don't see any objections, so with my authority, I, I say, go ahead, please. All right. Thank you. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn until tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM, where we will reconvene for our vote.
So moved.
Second.
Leslie Ann made the motion, and who's going to second for me?
I will. Eric?
Eric seconds for me, and I have to do this as a roll call. I apologize to everyone. Starting with you at the end of the table, Mike. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you. Paula?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. I thank everyone for their dedication and their investment to Silver Lake and our students. Thank you all for being here this evening. Have a good night.